Well, I want to welcome everybody prior to the start of our council meeting on a hot afternoon headed to evening in Des Moines, Iowa, starting our summer off and after we completed such an active weekend with Iron Man and Gay Pride and so many other events going on in and around Des Moines. I want to take a moment and say a few words about a problem that is plaguing America, and that's the issue of gun violence. And as we begin to approach the midpoint of 2022, we as a nation are on a pace to match or surpass last year's record-setting number of mass shootings. I remember back in 2006, I was one of the original signers on Mayors Against Illegal Guns that evolved into Moms Demand Action for Gun Safety and every town and all the other groups that keep speaking out, and I want to thank them for continuing to keep that in front of us. It was reported recently that gun-related deaths have overtaken car accidents as the leading cause of death in our children. Clearly, we are facing a public health crisis in this country as a sobering reality that we see and read about every week and sometimes day after day. In this spring, we have seen it play out on our own streets in Des Moines, Iowa, Ames, Iowa, and other places around the state and across the country in our communities. And it seems with each passing tragedy, our heartache is only surpassed by our frustration week after week, month after month, as these deaths continue. Earlier this month, I attended a meeting of the United States Conference of Mayors, and together, we pledged to stand united across party lines and say enough is enough. And if anybody's real excited about reading pages of this stuff, we sent this off to our members of Congress and the leaders on both sides of the aisle, Senator McConnell and Senator Schumer. And we pledged again, as I say, to stand united. This is not about whether you wear a red coat or a blue coat or a green coat or any other coat. This is about all of us protecting the health and the safety of our citizens in our communities across this country. And as mayors, we called on Congress to quickly pass legislation to address gun violence, starting with common-sense solutions like requiring background checks on all gun sales, passing a strong red flag law, and raising the age to possess or even purchase a handgun or assault weapon from 18 to 21. Yesterday, a gun reform framework agreement was unveiled by a bipartisan group of U.S. senators. It's a place to start, but seemingly, to me, falls short of what we as mayors urged. We are a nation at risk that stands alone from the rest of the world when it comes to gun violence. The days of offering thoughts and prayers have passed. More, much more needs to occur, or we can expect these same violent deadly results again and again and again. I'll open it up if any of our council members want to say something, but thank you for allowing me the time, and I welcome any comments anybody would like to make.
And what year was that, that you first signed on, Mayor County? I appreciate your long-term...
2006.
Wow.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for those remarks and for your leadership on this issue. You know, we do need to do more, and we do need to do whatever we can to move the needle from a policy change perspective. I know back in 2019, we explored some things as a council. We've struggled from a preemption perspective, and so we really need our state and federal partners to step up. And, you know, I think there is a large suite of policies that could be implemented. Mayor, I think you talked about some that I think would be particularly effective, including background checks and raising the ages, including, I'd include banning assault rifles as well as high-capacity magazines, limiting trigger activators as well. Those are a couple of the things that we actually looked at as a city when we struggled with the preemption piece. I do think when there are opportunities, we should help push and get whatever we can done today, and then move on to keep working towards other policy goals. To that end, I'd be interested in doing a joint letter from the council, particularly to our senators, because that is where I think we need the immediate action to make sure that the bipartisan framework gets across the line. And so I'd be interested in sending on a letter from the council to Senators Grassley and Ernst, letting them know that they've got constituents in the largest community in the state who think we need more action than just that framework, but that we would appreciate them helping move that framework over the finish line in the coming weeks. And I'm happy to work on drafting that if we want to do it as a sign-on letter or however the council would want to do it, whoever is interested in putting their name behind something like that. I'd like to see if we can...
When we work with our city legal and put something together and then put it out to the rest of the council and see who would want to support and send it on to urge our senators to move some things forward to that point. I remember that, as we, as you pointed out, in 2019, the mayors pushed a piece out, actually it was August 8th, where we asked Leader McConnell and Leader Schumer to move a couple of items forward, and specifically that at that time was H.R. 8, which came out of the House, which was a bipartisan background check bill in 2019, and then H.R. 1112, which was a more enhanced version of a background check, and the Senate still has not taken it up. So, any rate, I just urge them to, let's, as you pointed out, Josh, they've got something on the table, let's move it forward, and let's hope that we can get some support from our representatives to look at it in a nonpartisan way and try to protect the health and well-being of our citizens and especially young people in schools and places like that. So, we'll put it together. Joe, anything, or...
Mayor, just real quick, a lot of you know that my kids actually attend Iowa State University, and they're actually at that church every Thursday, and I'm very thankful they weren't there. They were home from school the Thursday that the shooting happened. They have friends there, they were up there. So, it's scary. I mean, it's very close to home, and I appreciate your comments. You know, we not only have a gun issue, we have a mental illness issue. We have a lot of folks that are suffering in our community, whether that be from the COVID that's gone on for two years and the mental illness that it's just, and we're not getting the resources that we need financially from the state, from the federal government to help others that really need help. And I'm hoping that that letter that we are going to talk, not only about the gun violence, but we're going to talk a lot about mental illness and some of the tragedies that are happening because of that. It's not a normal thing for an 18-year-old to go in and start killing children in a school, in an elementary school, no matter what. It's not normal to go buy two ARs. There's something that's there that we need to catch as citizens in our community. I just, we need to have the resources to be able to help others, and I hope that we'll focus a lot on that also. And so, yeah, I'm happy that you brought that up. Thank you.
May I ask quickly, do either Connie or Linda want to make a quick statement or no?
Well, this is Connie. I just wanted to say, thank you, Mayor County, for bringing it up, because I think we definitely, I would be very happy to sign on on something, as Councilman Mandelbaum brought up and Gatto also. So, I would be supportive of signing something and sending it on, because I think we need to make a statement, and more people need to raise their voice to get to the solution. So, again, just want to say I would support it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and this is Linda, and I also support it, and thank you for bringing it to council this evening and talking about it, and let's get something written and signed, and we'll send it off to our senators. Thank you.
All right. And with that, if there's no other comments, I think we ought to start our council meeting. Let's mark that it is 5:04, and I'll ask Clerk, please take roll.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended, and I will quickly give you a couple of changes. Consent item agendas, these are tonight's items 3 through 65. 5A was withdrawn, the inspections are not complete. 51I was added, submitting travel and training for myself, sponsor Mandelbaum and I put that on, Council Communication Number 22-282. 53 was corrected, added urban renewal development agreement. 57F was corrected with the number of units. 58 is corrected with roll call and added agreement on the regular items. 69B was added, is final consideration of an ordinance above, and it was waiver requested by Michael Schaefer of Schaefer Consulting LLC, requires six votes. And Item 71 was corrected, and it added a site plan. Does anybody have anything else?
I hear none, Your Honor. I'll move Item 2.
Second.
We've got to move in a second. Ask, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, the item passes, moves us on to Item 3. This is approving that consent agenda. Again, these are Items 3 through 65. These are generally routine items, and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules, council requests, an item to be removed to be considered separately. I don't have a notice of anything to be removed this evening, unless somebody has something, I'd ask for a motion to...
Move Item 3, Your Honor.
Second.
Item 3 has been moved and seconded. I'd ask everybody to vote, and Connie and Linda?
Aye.
I vote yes, aye.
All right.
Six, yes.
All right. That'll take us to the hearing items. Again, as a reminder, for the zoning items only, which are 68, 69, and 70, we will hear from parties in interest first and then the general public. The parties in interest for zoning items include only the applicant for that rezoning and those persons living within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned, to whom the city has sent notices. After all the parties in interest have commented, we will open it up for any member of the public for germane comments. To aid in recognizing the parties in interest who may speak on the zoning item, I will ask everyone else to not step up to the microphone unless they are the zoning applicant or one of those parties that lives within that 250 feet and receive mailed notice. And anyone who approaches the mic before their time will be compared with that list, and if you're not on the list, will be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the evening and will be required to leave the building. So, please, wait until I call on the general public for the zoning items, or you will not be called on for the remainder of the meeting. After the parties in interest have been called upon, the general public will be allowed to speak, to make germane public comments, and not to exceed one minute per person for a maximum of seven minutes, unless the hearing is ended sooner, for failure to make those germane comments. And for the design alternative hearing, the applicant will have up to five minutes to present their appeal, and then the hearing will be open to the general public comment, again, not to exceed one minute per person, to a maximum of seven minutes, unless the hearing, again, is ended sooner for if there's a lack of speakers or the lack of germane comments. For the other hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comments, as in not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of five minutes per hearing, unless the hearing, again, is ended for lack of comment or non-germene comments. As a reminder, on the public hearings, only the comments as to the plans, specifications, form of documents, and engineer's estimate in the lowest bidder designation are going to be considered germane, and all other comments will not. So, let's go ahead and start. Again, our first item is Item 66. Item 66 is on vacation of an alley right-of-way located north of and adjoining 206 Sixth Avenue in approval of a license agreement with ND22 Fleming LLC and 206 Sixth Avenue LLC. A is the first consideration of the ordinance, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the city manager and requires six votes. Let's go ahead and open it up for germane comments, if anybody in the public would like to make a comment about this alley right-of-way. Seeing none, could we get a motion on Item 66?
I'd be happy to move Item 66, A and B.
And I'll second.
All right, been moved and seconded, I'll ask everyone to vote. And Connie and Linda?
West... Westergaard votes yes.
Bozen votes yes.
Six, yes.
Item 67, which is on conveyance of excess city-owned property located on Garden Road and locally known as District/Tax Parcels 010/05190-000-000, comma, and 010/05191-000-000, and 010, for those of you taking notes, do this very closely, and 05192-000-000, and then 010/05193-000-000, and 010/5194-000-000, to build, to see build LLC for $133,560, Council Communication Number 22-257. And again, we'll open it up for germane comments from the general public, again, on this conveyance of city-owned property near Garden Road for $133,560. Anyone? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'll move Item 67.
Second.
Ask everyone to vote.
Westergaard votes yes.
Bozen votes yes.
Six, yes.
All right, takes us to Item 68. Item 68 is on request from Tiger Night LLC. Barry Nelson is the officer for property at 1210 and 1220 Army Post Road to rezone the property from limited MX3 mixed-use district to a limited MX3 mixed-use district with conditions to allow automotive upholstery and automotive detailing uses. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. And first, parties in interest, we'll ask the applicant for the rezoning to step up if he is here. We'll ask you to step up, I think. You get to use the podium tonight. This is huge.
My name's Barry Nelson. I'm owner of Tiger Night LLC with my wife. Live at 13947 Oakbrook Drive, Urbandale, Iowa. And I have a tenant that, so MX3 allows for minor auto repair, but when the city planning on the south side took it to like NB1, the new city, the new zoning, all that went in, lost a bunch of uses. I don't know if you know this property, but it's 16,000 square feet, so it's an enormous property. Had a tenant move in, had no idea that auto upholstery for seats and autotops would be considered minor auto repair, because people that need that stuff done are not going to bring in their, take the autotop off their car or take the seats out of their car themselves. So, went back and asked for that to be changed back so that we could have, I mean, we're talking Porsches and classic cars. That's about it.
Counsel, any questions?
Just a quick question. So, as I drive down Army Post Road, a lot of the lawn care trucks are always parked outside. You say you have 16,000 square feet. Can they not put those inside, their trailers and their trucks?
The trucks are not considered outdoor storage.
The trailers with the lawnmowers are?
The trailers probably are, but they unload all their lawnmowers every night, and so we have that out with planning and zoning, because lawn care is allowed, is in allowed use in my building, and I don't know one lawn care company that doesn't have trailers. So, the tenant doesn't want to pay for all the extra space for licensed and operable trailers, which is similar to a licensed and operable car. So, if you know that parking lot, it's an enormous parking lot, it holds like 66 cars. So, that's been a contention, but lawn care...
It has. I've had multiple complaints on that property of just, you know, the truck's always sitting there, the trailer's always sitting there with the lawnmower sitting out. I mean, it's...
There aren't lawnmowers.
There's not a lot of organization when they pull it in.
I don't know.
Everybody's, and I know it's not your business, but it's, they're scattered on there. I mean, even when you look up Google, I mean, you can see the truck and the trailer is always attached. I just wondered, you say it's that big, you know, can we pull them inside?
Then they have to pay for more rent, and obviously, that's a contention with the tenant. The trucks they're pulling inside due to theft, catalytic converters, stuff like that...
Know all about it, yeah.
And so, the trailers are licensed and operable, and cars are allowed if they're licensed and operable. I don't know if they're leaving any lawnmowers out.
My understanding from reading the, reading the planning and zoning discussion was that the applicant agreed to no outdoor storage. Am I...
As the owner, I am, and then I'm telling my tenants they can't do that either.
Okay. No outdoor storage of...
Well, so I was after outdoor storage behind the building. I have fenced in area that's about 40 by 60, I suppose.
Can we put the trailers back there?
If I can get my tenants to put them back there, I'm definitely going to put my trailers, I want to try to get all my trailers inside, too. I have three. But the back use of the building, so we did an addition, which is 50 by almost 60, that's for me, because I own the building and I have a lot of, I have a skid loader and three big trailers and another pickup and two man lifts, and so I wanted to use the back. I was after outdoor storage for me in the back, and they said no to that also, even though you cannot see it from the street. And I put a house in on the lot to the south, so I own that, too. But it's the lawn care trailers that are the contention, and I've told him...
They are. I don't, I've never noticed your stuff in the back, and I've never had anyone complain about your stuff in the back.
I don't...
And I know there's one, there's a building that does, drive it to the, be to the west of your building, and they store stuff, you know, it's all fenced into the back, and they do a lot of stuff inside.
You tuck the gray building on the corner of 13th and 14th Post?
They don't have, you know, I don't have any complaints, but do get a, I do, I'm not sure if Josh does, even though it's not my ward. A lot of people get it confused that I represent all of the south side, and so I hear a lot of the trailers being parked out there along with the green trucks.
So, would it be okay to, the green trucks, they're putting in overnight. I mean, if there's one left, it's maybe one night. I mean, I know they're putting those in due to theft.
Okay.
The trailers...
For a while, though, they didn't. That's why they were staffed.
Okay. The trailers, so 1202 Army Post is next to it, and that's a flooring store now. It used to be the old Army Surplus store.
Yeah.
Would it be okay to park the trailers behind that building? Because I own that, too.
I think anywhere that you park those trailers, not on the front of Army Post Road, you put them out of sight?
Because those two tenants are friends, too.
Out of sight, out of mind. I think, I think we're going to, at least me, I'm going to get less complaints. I'm sure Josh is going to get less complaints. I don't have a problem with it. I don't know what the zoning calls for, if you have to go back, but I'll tell you, that would be, that would be much better, you know?
Okay.
If that's fenced in, and the neighbors aren't complaining behind you, and, I mean, yeah...
I don't want to lose the tenant.
Yeah, no, I understand, and we don't want, we don't want you, I mean, that building sat vacant for a long time. I'm not telling you that, to lose a tenant, but now that you're here, I mean, you know, I'm glad that you came and we're able to discuss this, and hopefully, we can come up with some type of solution.
I can tell him to put them behind that building and see if that resolves it. That might be a good option.
That would be a great option for, for at least...
I don't know that code enforcement is going to...
I see Mike walking in, and so he's going to say that code enforcement is...
Yeah, we've got to get to a conclusion here. Mike, do you have a couple of comments that maybe ought to be made?
Mayor, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, Deputy Director of Development Services. The applicant's required to comply on this site with a site plan, and so that would include outdoor storage. He's proposing to store items on another site. That site will have to have an approved site plan as well, so I wouldn't get into too many approvals tonight of where he should go store things. We just rely on the site plan and zoning enforcement.
So, are the trailers allowed to sit in the parking lot out front?
No, there's a requirement for outdoor storage to be screened, not in a front yard. So, that's one of the conditions. It says it has to comply with a site plan review, and it's a zoning enforcement matter. But the zoning, the change in the zoning that's in front of you tonight, that use is already allowed on the property. This is just to add upholstery to the zoning allowances on the property.
Is it specific use to accommodate your tenant, correct?
His tenant, but he's still under existing conditions.
Right, but my biggest concern is we're storing trailers out there. Are we going to be storing seats outside now that we're going to do, we're going to do upholstery, and, you know, it's just going to become something like, looking like that? That's my biggest concern.
They would not be allowed to do that under the site plan. Whether or not somebody does that is a zoning violation, we'll have to enforce on that.
Well, they've been storing trailers and trucks until they started stealing catalytic converters and now their trucks, their trailers aren't.
Again, licensed trucks allowed.
Yeah, no, I get that.
But equipment, that needs to be either in the building or behind the building.
Is the trailer considered equipment?
I'd have to defer to our zoning enforcement officer on that, on what they've classified it, but certainly, as you were suggesting, upholstery, things like that outside, definitely needs to be in the building.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
If we have a couple more questions, can you remain available here? Let's ask if there's any other parties in interest. Anybody? And are there any germane comments from the general public, others here that would like to speak on this item? Anyone? All right, we need to make a motion, I think.
So, just, just to be clear, I mean, are you in agreement to get your tenant to put the trailer somewhere other than the front of the building?
I don't want to throw...
Because I can't be supportive of giving you anything else if you're not going to, if we're not going to be, if we're not going to try to work together and try to get those trailers somewhere else.
I'm willing to work with you, for sure. I can't, good discussion on guns, pardon the phrase, but I can't hold a gun to their head and make them.
But you're the tenant, you're the landlord.
Yep. So, do I victim?
It is, it is your building, and you're going to be responsible for it.
Yeah, I'm going to get the notices and the fines, but all I can do is make him either rent more space and park them inside, and I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. He just says he's going to pull them home and park them in his house.
Yeah, I mean, he can do that until his neighbors complain, because that's against the rules, too.
So, I definitely want to comply, I mean, but I don't want to lose the tenant, either.
I don't want you to lose the tenant, but I mean, if... I don't want you to lose the tenant, but I mean, if there's, if there's room inside that building, I would, I would prefer that you say, yeah, we're going to get those trailers inside, but you're not saying that.
I'm going to have to force him to rent more space, change the lease. And I don't, I don't know if he'll do that, he may move.
Or he could park behind. So he's not on the street.
Behind the other building.
Well, let's have a motion then. What's it sound like?
I mean, I'm okay moving item 68 and 68A. We can, if you want, we can leave the additional ordinance readings so that we have time to.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it. That sounds good, I'll second that.
All right.
Westergaard votes yes.
Bozen votes yes.
Okay.
Six, yes.
All right, went through the first reading. Item 69. This is on a request from Kraus Properties LLC. It's the owner represented by Charles W. Campbell, who's the officer for property at 2500 Southeast 43rd Street to amend plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from business park to industrial use and to rezone the property from EX, mixed use district, to I2 industrial district to allow the use of the property as a truck parking facility. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver was requested by Michael Schaefer, Schaefer Consulting LLC, requires six votes. We'll ask first, parties in interest, is the applicant here? Ask you to step up.
Hello, Mayor and Council, and my name is Mike Schaefer with Schaefer Consulting and I'm representing Kraus Companies, who is selling the property, and the Polchek family who's in the process of purchasing the property. I don't have anything to add to the application. I just wanted to be present in case any questions came up and I can address those as you have them.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'll move item 69A and B.
Okay. Yep, yep, we will, we will.
Sorry.
But I think we'd better ask if there's anybody else who is a party in interest within that 250 feet around this particular property seeking to be rezoned. Seeing none, I'll now ask if the general public, if there's anybody from general public, please step forward.
Hello, I'm on your agenda later at number seven under Sam Davis. I'm just calling because I live, or calling, I'm here because I live really close to a parking lot that has semi trucks parking. I don't know how close this is going to be to residents, but I know it's a really bad time when they park and they back up and all night 24/7 is a beep, beep, beep. And it's really, really aggravating and it really, really echoes throughout the neighborhood. So I just want to know, wanted to make sure that there's some sort of buffer between this sort of truck parking lot and residence because where so few buffers are around there in the world. It sure would be nice if we started creating some from the get-go.
It's not near any residential.
Okay, yeah, I'm not familiar with the area. I just was trying to, you know, for all the duckies and birdies, they're fine.
Good question.
Worried about people. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right.
69A and B, I will move, Your Honor.
Okey doke, 69A and B has been moved.
Second.
Westergaard votes yes.
All right.
Bozen votes yes.
Six, yes.
All right. Item 70, on a request from the Parks and Recreation for property at 1 Line Drive to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from parks and open space to public, semi-public and to rezone from F flood district and P2 public civic and institutional district to P2 public civic and institutional district to bring the existing park use into conformance and allow park improvements. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above and B is the final consideration and it's being requested, the waiver by Ben Page, our Parks and Recreation Director. Again, it will require six votes. So item 70, we'll ask again, parties in interest. Anyone here to speak that I think it's pretty clear what they are doing? Ask if anybody within 250 feet would like to speak. Let's open it up for the general public. Any general germane comments about this?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to move item 70A and 70B.
All right.
Second.
70A and B have been moved and seconded.
Westergaard votes yes.
Bozen votes yes.
Six, yes.
Okay. Takes us to item 71, which is on an appeal of Knapp Homes LLC. John Knapp is the owner, represented by Adam Cockrell, the officer of a denial of a type 2 design alternative for a site plan, scooters, for a property located at 4402 Douglas Avenue. Choose one alternative, either A or B. A is to deny or B is to approve. And first, let's give the applicant a few moments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Wally Pelz, Pelz Design Services, 2323 Dixon Street, Des Moines, Iowa 50316. I'm here before you with one of three scooters that we were proposing in the city of Des Moines. The other two passed with any major issues. The Beaverdale District's a little more difficult. However, we did meet with the neighborhood. We've added brick to the site. We've made it pedestrian friendly with a walk-up window to differentiate it and then moved the building closer to the street. Those are the items that we can control. The other items that PNC found objectionable were things that I just cannot address. And so we're asking for the same type of relief, not exactly the same from those other two locations, but similar. And if you're familiar with this location, it's the old 66 gas station that's been there for a little bit.
Just a little bit.
Right, so ideally we'll be adding street trees. We'll be adding greenery to the corner to hide our drive-through, even place the building out. You know, typically on a scooter, the drive goes around it. We have placed the building outside of that and reconfigured our site to do the best we can to screen the drive-through. We will also have fencing and landscaping. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on our site. It's a pretty simple 669 square foot little building that I hope you're familiar with, so. Do you have any questions for me?
All right, anybody, any questions for Mr. Pelz?
I don't know if you, you can answer, but you know, one of the, the other concerns that, that I think staff raised was highest and best use for this property. And I know it's been sitting there for a long time. And my understanding is the owner is committed, if there are higher and better uses that come along in the future, the owner is, is certainly open to those, is my, my understanding. I don't know if you can confirm that for us.
That is my understanding as well. We have exhausted the, our engineering prowess, even my young intern engineers here who's been cranking on this four different site plan versions. We even looked at doing different versions that would be a different type of store. I don't have the space. And until such time, we can acquire some additional space. We felt it wasn't fair to our client to make them sit and wait and let the store stay there, so.
Mayor County, I believe this space has been vacant since 2008. And so there's a, a very nice letter of endorsement by the Beaverdale Neighborhood Association in support of just exactly what you're proposing, which, as I understand, it would be to, B, to approve the site plan as you proposed.
That would be our request, yes.
All right, anybody have any other questions? Otherwise, I'll ask Mr. Pelz to stay available in case something comes up. Any other parties in interest? Those received notice within 250 feet. Are there any other germane comments to be made by the general public? Looks like we've got a speaker.
Yep, Marcus Cane in Beaverdale Neighborhood Association, 50310. As Councilman Voss noted, we sent a letter of support for the approval of this appeal. This, this location has been dilapidated for quite some time and this is a location that neighbors are continuously asking us about. When is something going to happen? And right now, Councilman Mandelbaum, I understand the highest and best use argument, but right now this is the best, the best option for us to get some traction going. I would really appreciate if all of you would support.
It's a use.
It's a use, exactly, yeah.
Since 2008.
After 14 years. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hearing none, I'd like to move 71B.
Second.
71 is been, B has been moved and seconded.
Westergaard votes yes.
Bozen votes yes.
Do we need to do a, a second and third reading or this, that's, this does it?
Nope, this does it.
Six, yes.
All right. Item 72, which is on Watchers Avenue from Southwest 56th Street to Southwest 61st Street. Resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Vanderpool Construction, Inc. Tobin Vanderpool is the president, $1,533,497.95. Council Communication number 22-271. A is the approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Ask the general public if anybody has any comments they would like to make regarding the plan specifications, form of the documents, the engineer's estimate or the low bidder.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 72, 72A.
All right.
Second.
Westergaard votes yes.
Bozen votes yes.
Six, yes.
Okey doke. Item 73 is on a citywide pump station, telelog communication system conversions solution, approving plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file the bids and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Jensen Electric LLC. Michael Jensen is the owner, $1,214,617. Council Communication number 22-268. A is the approval of the contract and bond. And again, we'll ask the general public to make comments regarding those plan specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate or the low bidder designation. Anyone?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I'll move 73 and 73A.
All right, 73 and 73A have been moved.
Somebody's got to second it.
Bozen, yes.
Second.
Bozen votes yes, or Westergaard votes yes.
All right, it's been moved and seconded and we got all kinds of yeses.
Your Honor, we didn't hear who seconded that, I'm sorry.
Mandelbaum.
Mandelbaum.
There we go.
Six, yes.
All right, that ends our hearings. At 5:37. We'll now move along to approving number 74, which was not used. So we'll move quickly by that one to number 75, which is to review of the zoning board of adjustment decision granting a use variance to allow use of the property at 1022 Army Post Road for a limited vehicle maintenance repair, minor use in an RX1 mixed use district. Choose one alternative below. A, city council remands the decision and order to the zoning board of adjustment. For further study, the effective date of the board's decision will be deferred for 30 days from the date of the remand. Or B, the city council takes no action to review the decision and order and the decision of the board will become final on July 1st of 2022. Or C, the city council declines to remand the decision to the zoning board of adjustment and the decision of the board becomes final on this date today. Anybody?
I'll move 75B. Second.
75B has been moved and seconded.
Bozen, yes.
Westergaard votes yes.
All right, that'd be six, yes.
Six, yes.
Takes us to item 76. These are ordinances, first consideration. 76 is amending chapter 60 of the municipal code relating to the separation of shared forced air heating sources and testing of heating sources in rental units. Council Communication number 22-264. Counsel, any comments?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment that just appreciate Sue Ann's work on, Sue Ann's, appreciate Sue Ann's work on this amendment to our code. We had some heat that was off in some rental buildings this, this nasty winter and brought to the attention by some of the renters who had no heat for four days. So hopefully this will go a long way to solving those issues. So Sue Ann, thanks again for bringing this forward.
And Sue Ann, if you can find a way to bottle up and store this heat that we're gaining today, that would be good to add to that as well. All right, any motion?
Is there, is there public comment, or no? Okay, I'll move 76 and pursuant to rule 42A, I'll waive the second and third reading so we can get this moving.
Second on that, thank you.
It's been moved and seconded.
Westergaard votes yes.
Thank you, Sue Ann.
Bozen is yes.
You can go on to the next.
Six, yes.
Item 77 is amending chapter 60 of the municipal code related to carbon monoxide alarms. Council Communication number 22-263. Sue Ann, any comment you want to make on that one?
I'll move item 77 and pursuant to rule 42A, I'll waive the second and third reading.
I'll second that.
Westergaard votes yes.
Bozen votes yes.
Six, yes.
Item 78 is amending chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication number 22-256. A is a code modification related to parking changes on Willamere Drive between 61st Street and 63rd Street. B is a code modification to modify time of day parking restrictions on 9th Street between Grand Avenue to High Street. C is a code modification to remove time of day parking restrictions on the west side of 9th Street between Pleasant Street to Chestnut Street. D is a code modification to remove time of day parking restrictions on the west side of 10th Street between Walnut Street to Locust Street. E is a code modification to remove time of day parking restrictions on the east side of 10th Street between High Street to Woodland. F is a code modification to remove time of day parking restrictions on the west side of 12th Street between Cherry Street and Walnut Street. G is the code modification to remove the time of day parking restrictions on Locust Street between 6th Avenue to 7th Street. That is 78A to G.
Your Honor, I'll move 78A through G and pursuant to rule 42- Your Honor, I'll move 78A through G, and pursuant to Rule 42A, I'll move to waive the second and third reading.
All right.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
And thanks to John Davis and his staff for bringing these quirkiness in our parking regulations forward while they're installing the new pay stations. So, good that we can do some cleanup on this, thank you.
Bozen votes yes.
Westergaard votes yes.
Six, yes.
All right, takes us to item 79, which is Oak Park Highland Park, Tiff District, number 4. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Aaron Olson Douglas, Development Services Director, requires six votes. B is the final terms of the urban renewal development agreement with the Euclid Foresight LLC for the renovation of 413 Euclid Avenue into a mixed-use residential and commercial development and approving conceptual development plan. Council communication number 22-274. Any thoughts on that Oak Park Highland Park, Tiff District, number 4?
Westergaard would like to move 79A, B, and add C to waive the second and third readings pursuant to Rule 42.
It's on there.
There's a waiver on A already.
Is it?
Yep.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And B.
You're correct. Just 79A and B.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
Westergaard votes yes.
Bozen.
Tony?
I said yes.
Okay.
Six, yes.
All right. That now brings us to a request to speak. And for those people wishing to speak this evening under the public speaking items, on the agenda, we will only be calling on those who have registered to speak. All speakers must comply with the rules regarding their names and addresses, or they will not be recognized to speak. Each of the eight speakers this evening will receive up to two minutes each to make their comments, and please keep your own time, because at the end of the two minutes, the clerk will announce time, and the speaker's mic will be closed, and we'll then move on to the next speaker. We want to hear from all of our residents who have registered to speak, and we encourage residents that to be respectful of others' viewpoints that are different from our own. While you may certainly disagree with a viewpoint, I want to remind everyone that council rules provide that any comments that are slanderous will result in that speaker being barred from further comment. As the presiding officer, I'll determine whether the comments are slanderous, and fair warning, arguing with the presiding officer about my determination on the matter is not permitted, and doing so will be considered disruptive and result in the speaker being barred from further comments and being required to leave the building. Okie doke. Let's go ahead and move forward. Our first speaker is Armzat Zing.
Hello, thank you. May I start? Okay, thank you so much. It was great to see you all. This is my first time here, so thank you. I just wanted to sort of talk about more so the infrastructure of the city in regards to one street in particular, the George Flag Parkway. I just wanted to sort of talk about sort of, I was reading up on this, on this street, I was reading up on the, on the sort of person that this street was named after, and disregarding the sort of questionable measure that he might, may or may not have in terms of that, I just wanted to say like the general public itself seems to want a change in the name of said street. There's a petition that I filled out, that a majority of people have filled out, that was sent to hopefully all of you regarding this issue, and I wanted to sort of more so talk about the city of Des Moines itself. This is a developing city in terms of, in 30, 40 years, this is going to become a booming metropolis like Kansas City or St. Louis, but like, right now, you all are in the unique position of setting the foundation of the building blocks and making sure that like, the bricks that are started are laying with sort of trust and coordination with the community in what they want. So I was thinking that in terms of myself being, I'm a, I'm a medical student, three years down the road, I will become a physician. One of the main issues in this area is sort of retaining physicians of color, of sort of diversifying the sort of backgrounds of the hospitals here. And then one of the, one of the things that could promote this is sort of changing things like this to promote sort of diversity and equity in the community at large. So people like me and people and other people similar to me in my, in my background choose to stay and choose to help the greater Des Moines community as a whole. And a simple act like changing a street would seem inconsequential, but it's a monumental first step. I will link to my tab.
Our next speaker is Anna Campos.
Anna Campos, 1418 D Wolf Street. I'm here to thank Joe, Linda, and Carl. They participated in the walk for Emma that we had the 3rd of June. We took a route, two routes. One was the route that Emma walked home from that day of the accident, and then the route that DOT claims that was, is the safest route. And I just am happy that we had a good turnout, and people came in support, and I'm looking to make a change, especially on University Avenue. The roads are not safe for pedestrians, for students, for elderly, for churchgoers. I have done some research on my own, and I even sat on University and watched the cars go by to see the traffic flow from 235 exit ramp onto University Avenue. So that is with the redoing of that interstate, now it's only a exit ramp. So it's not both exit and entrance. You have to go to, I think, East and Bertovar to get on the entrance to 235 from that area. And then I have also talked to the school board in trying to work on getting those school zones extended in that area. A hundred feet is not worth another life. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan. He and pronouns. I'm honored to speak today about virtual meetings. The city needs to offer virtual participation for city meetings. It's inequitable to not offer virtual participation in public meetings in the midst of a pandemic that's still spreading and that is disproportionately impacting people who are already marginalized, specifically black people, and also many immunocompromised people do not have a way to participate in these meetings at all. We are now years in this pandemic, and we are in a surge right now. Unfortunately, there's no end clearly in sight, so it makes sense to finally take the step to introduce virtual meetings, knowing that this is going to continue for some time. We aren't really seeing support, much support from the city on other issues with COVID either, although the city has millions in unspent COVID ARPA funds, at least last that I've been aware. I've been saying this for months now in these meetings and had to misspeak in the last couple of meetings because of the very thing I'm talking about. I caught COVID and had no way to participate. For one of those, I had actually recovered, but I stayed home out of an abundant of caution, so I didn't get anybody else sick, just in case I was still contagious. And the fact that people are having to make that choice, whether to risk infecting people potentially in these meetings, makes these meetings less safe, especially when the testing is so shaky around, when the contagion really goes down. I also want to talk about DMPD spending. The city just approved $160,000 worth of ammo for DMPD. They did this without allowing public comment, and they did this on the consent agenda, which is meant by city code for items that are routine and non-controversial. These items are voted on in bulk without any discussion by the city, so it didn't come up on the screen or anything. And what I don't really understand fully is that if you really believe that our city and our police do such good things for the public, I'm not sure why you keep hiding these votes and not just including them with discussion and public comment. Thank you.
Carolyn Yulenhick Walker.
Good evening, Carolyn Yulenhick Walker, 4111 Ingersoll Avenue. First, I will not express my passion for saving our planet by singing this evening. I find I'm much less nervous singing with my students than for elected officials. However, I am here this evening because of two marvelous opportunities we have as elected officials, city staff, residents, and businesses to really make a difference in facing some of our climate challenges in Des Moines. The first big thing, thanks to you, the city council passing, is the joint clean energy statement adopted by Des Moines and the Mid-American Energy Company to jointly develop a clean energy plan by the end of the year. Together, staff from the city and Mid-American will publish an annual report detailing the progress for clean energy, energy efficiency, and our climate goals. The second big thing is this Wednesday evening at 5:30, it is the kickoff of Des Moines' own climate action plan called ADAPT. This will be even greater looking at our climate goals and reaching them. Both of these plans will be going full force within the next year to 18 months. We must hold each other accountable for developing the best plans possible. We must look at what comes out of these plans as budget priorities for the city of Des Moines. Unless words on paper are backed by dollars, nothing will happen. I do hope to see city council members, city staff, people, residents, and our businesses attending this online kickoff of our climate action plan. And I, can I put this on the screen? It shows the website of, that people can register for.
Laura, could you turn the camera on?
It shows the website. Everybody can go on whoever, city council, residents.
Mayor, I'm trying to get it to work here.
Is it too big?
She'll, she'll take care of it.
Okay. And the website is dsm.city/adapt, because the new climate action and adaptation plan is called ADAPT. So we've really got a lot to look forward to. There.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Danielle Stinson.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Gertis. I live at 4019 Lower Beaver Road. I'm the president of the Lower Beaver Neighborhood Association. For the past two decades, with your help, the LBNA has accomplished some amazing things. But as we look forward to the future, there are three challenges that we really need the council's help to overcome. The first issue is homelessness. Like many neighborhoods, we have heard numerous complaints regarding the houseless camps within our borders. In the past, the response has been to remove these camps, to just shuffle them on, but the solution is temporary at best. Moreover, the residents of these camps are our neighbors, and often, they are neighbors in need of mental health care, job training, financial assistance, et cetera. We would implore you, work together to truly address houselessness in our community. The second issue that our neighborhood needs your help to address is the matter of Douglas Avenue. We appreciate the progress that's been made by the Douglas Avenue Coalition and various public entities to revitalize this crucial artery. The loss of plaza lanes continues to be a catastrophic setback for our neighborhood. More than 20,000 vehicles pass by this site every single day. But even with Tiff and other things in place, we've been told that any redevelopment will struggle to generate an appropriate return on investment. We need your help. We need you to target this area with even more resources to make its redevelopment feasible. Finally, according to Des Moines Public Schools, there are more than 20 different languages spoken by the families of our neighborhood's elementary school. That number is actually growing. We would love to talk with you about the challenges that that presents to our neighborhood and others as well, but we're actually here today to celebrate this diversity. On July 9th, the Lower Beaver Neighborhood Association will be hosting its first-ever summer festival at Deborah Heights Wesleyan Church, 4025 Lower Beaver Road. We're going to feature food vendors from several different cultures, music and dancing, and fun for the whole family, and I would like to just personally invite all of you to come. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? I wish, how I got here, that I was able to walk, but I can't walk anymore because now I get harassed when I walk underneath where the canners live, and I don't, not sure if I'm walking in their living room, or the bathroom, or whatever it is, but the people who come into Des Moines to sell cans, to collect and sell cans. I wish I could have biked here, but I can't get here because there are no shoulders on the road. But why I'm here is because this is a complaint-based system of Des Moines. Des Moines is complaint-based, and last month, I shared the noise ordinance with all of you guys, which is wonderful to have a noise ordinance. I've had the police, I've probably had, I don't know, 10 squad cars at my house in the last month to try to make this noise ordinance work. It doesn't work. I'm wasting police department's time. I'm told I'm supposed to call dispatch. Dispatch will send out an officer, and officer comes out, and then they have to go back, and they have to get somebody who's trained, who gets the little decibel meter, and then they have to go back. Anyway, it's really a bad system. When I talked to one police officer yesterday, he was out for the sixth time after 11 straight hours of 85-plus decibels in my yard from a festival. She said that it might be best to have somebody who was a police officer zip around and go to those outdoor events and check things out, and then they can call a police officer if they need to, because I'm just wasting time. But I also don't need to listen to somebody else's music in my house with everything closed. And I think about the noise, the cars, the motorcycles, and all these things that are just going, whatever, unreported, nobody cares, and I think about what it does to me. The anxiety, lack of sleep, decreased productivity. I cannot imagine if I had a kid next to me as I'm like listening to this music, I'd probably backhand him. And I think that has to go like, I believe, I believe like this, letting people get away with these noises and making us forced to have to live with this crap day in and day out from all different places is really a trigger to other things. A stepping stone.
May I read her address, please?
Oh, sure, 1807 Southwest.
1807 Southwest.
Yep, just listen. All right, thank you.
Yes, my name is Jolene Prescott. I live at 3013 Third Street, and I have always had a fascination with waterfalls. And after my husband died, I discovered that Des Moines has a waterfall. It's called the Center Street Dam. And so I'd always like to go to the little parking lot on the west side of the river, and I would drive down in there, and I'd sit, and I could listen to the river, you know, relax. Well, a year and a half ago, we opened up a very, very nice skate park in this area, and now, I never thought I'd see a traffic jam in that parking lot, but I actually saw, I see them every night when I'm there. We're having a real hard time with that. People are driving down into there, and then they're parking in places where they shouldn't because they're blocking in other people. And it's really not really well-controlled. And I was wondering if we could get some paint there and maybe paint where people should park, and so that people aren't blocking in other people, and also put a sign up when you enter that parking lot, because it is a two-hour lot, and I've seen cars, you know, I've seen people park their cars there, and then they're gone. I saw a car there that was like, there for like six hours the other day. But I guess, I got, ended up calling, someone called me a fat BITCH when I was driving, I drove in there, and then somebody drove behind me, and then ended up taking the parking spot that I was waiting for to somebody to leave. I mean, I guess, I'm getting really frustrated. So if we could put some lines in that, you know, and have a So if we could put some lines in that, you know, and have a good sign so that we know, people know it's two hours, so people aren't coming over from Wells Fargo Arena and parking there, and also, well, that's okay. A handicap spot would be good in that, too.
Robert, I'll, uh, leave your seat and file, item A through H.
Right, it's been moved. Need a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any negative? Hearing none? Item passes?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. And a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 This meeting's adjourned. I want to thank you all for coming this evening. Stay cool. I understand, by the way, that Polk County is opening up.
Yeah, they're all, yes, they are all.
Polk County has opened up their cooling sites, so those that need cooling assistance, Polk County sites are open.